Okay, thank you. We're called back to order here. There is a slight change to the agenda. The police department will not be presenting today. Something unforeseen has happened just moments ago. And so what we're going to finish up the day with here is a discussion of budget and capital requests from both Department of Public Works and Town Buildings, both presented by Sean Colleen. And then we will wrap the day up as we do not need to have the executive session either.
Correct. So Sean, and you and I, you can do these in any order. I don't think you guys care either, right?
No. I mean, I care greatly, but...
You don't care which order they're in, is what I mean.
I thought it made sense to roll into Town Buildings after the discussion with the transfer station. It's similar. A handful of the increases are on the utilities again. And again, this was done, you know, the last days of December, as it was due. So also only based on, again, two years of actuals. That's all we were given out of Vadar. Other than I tried to roll back into some old spreadsheets to find them, but the basis of what I put in was the best knowledge I had at the time. So, you know, the very first line is up, 6,000, but again, I was basing that on this current year, what I knew then, and last year's actual.
Right. It looks like what you've actually spent on electricity is a lot more than what's been budgeted.
Right. And again, I don't know the exact date offhand, but it was about a calendar year ago, maybe a little more than that, that the company we were buying, we had a long-term contract with a company, and it was a very favorable rate on the electricity, on the generation side of the electricity. And they just disappeared. We got notified like a month later. What happens there is the bill automatically, I think it's through the regulations with the state, Eversource then just takes over. The bill was coming from Eversource anyway, that you start paying them directly, rather than through whoever you did. So we obviously aren't getting the same rate we had.
So why aren't you putting solar panels on the building?
Because that wouldn't be in this budget, anyway.
Get rid of these electric charges and be an exporter of electricity, so we get a check every month from Eversource instead of paying.
I'm glad you asked that. So...
And this grant funding here to pay for the installation, so it can be done for free.
What we don't see here is Town Hall and the police station, electric bills are being offset by a net metering from the DPW garage. The only charges from the DPW garage here are, there's a slight charge, I think that's for the transmission, but it generates more electricity on those solar panels than it uses, much more. So what happens is they netmeter the power coming out, and then it offsets the bills here for the generation charges. Whether or not this building could ever have solar panels, I don't know, but we're talking to Select, which is the company we used down there. It's not as favorable as it was several years ago. I don't know if anyone remembers, but there was a big rush to get through the contract work with the DPW garage. The state funding that was triggered was about to end, and we snuck that one in. The economy's changed a little bit. What works in our favor is the rates have gone up across the state, so what we get out of the net generation is more favorable than we thought.
Just one note on the solar poll, before we move on from that. I know the schools, all of the schools are looking at new roofs in the next five years, and I know that they're planning on looking at solar when they replace the roofs on Pine Hill, the middle school, and the high school.
We've been talking about Pine Hill for a long time.
Well, I think it makes sense to do, I think the thought is, it makes sense to do it concurrently with when you replace the roof.
Yeah.
Well, I'm told, I had this discussion with some solar, I have a company, an electronics company in Watertown, and we were getting solar in, we had an old roof, and they said if they install it, they will lift it up, have a new, so the new roof can be put in, and put it back down with no additional charge. You can add that as a contract line. So the assumption that you need to wait for a new roof, they said to me was a false assumption. It can go on anytime, regardless of the condition of the roof, and it'll pause in there that they will lift it up for the roof to be replaced whenever you need it.
Does it affect the cost of the new roof, though? They may lift them up, but does it cost differently to the person installing the new roof, whether there's solar panels or not?
These are all great questions for the sustainability coordinator.
Exactly.
I will mention that there is, for many years, there's one project on the facilities, capital planning, that was the salt shed at 7 Butler Street. That continues to get pushed out. The intent there, and I've already started discussions with Select again, because they have the solar array there, was to consider expanding the solar panels on the not built roof yet, over the salt shed, if we can just continue the roof that's already part of the DPW garage, and rebuild the salt shed, and then have another, it's almost another 50% more solar coverage there.
So one of the things the town of Sherburne needs is more revenue, and a very easy source of revenue for a town like Sherburne with a lot of open space is solar. That would produce a lot of revenue for the town. The more we can do in terms of solar, it not only eliminates the electric charges that were occurring on buildings, but it would allow us to export power and get checks that we can deposit, that we can use to fund increases that we need to do in other programs. And there's all kinds of grants that would support installation of these facilities.
As Sean said, in two weeks, when we have a sustainability coordinator, I think that's something we can talk to them about.
Yeah. I kind of work on the cost side of things.
On your budget, Sean, there was one, after electricity, like, I think it was the fire department had one, had a line item that was going up for maintenance. Was there, is there a specific project for that, or?
So there's several things, and this, where'd they go? Oh. I met with capital budget quite a while ago to go through the facilities, capital side of things. As you know, we've gone through the assessment of the buildings, and we've continually funded items that should be maintenance items, and should be part of the budget with the capital. Basically supplementing the operating budget with an annual capital ask, which really shouldn't be. If you spend $5,000 a year fixing garage doors, and you say you're going to continue doing that, you shouldn't be putting that in capital. So, after the discussions with them, I added a few of those things in there. And I believe that's what the fire department is. I don't think it's, especially the way these sheets come out, it's a little confusing looking at these. It's not by building, as far as the two different fire stations. So I think it was...
It's one for fire department, it looks like.
Yeah, and even though it's two different buildings.
Right.
In this sheet, again, we have that separated in others, but then it gets dumped into one bucket here, which, over time, now that we're into Vadar, we'll probably fix anyway, because it's been very confusing, the way things are broken out. Elevator service is the same thing. It doesn't always seem to be the same year, but it seems that every year, we're either fixing, you know, we're doing a couple thousand dollars worth of work on this elevator, or the one at Station 1. It's just a given. Those things happen, you have to inspect them.
So it looks like on elevator, for instance, you moved it into one line item and took it out of...
Yeah, so there's, right, exactly. Because I, again, it doesn't really matter. It hits the same place in the budget.
So just have one line item for elevator maintenance.
You know, in some places, we don't have enough line items to separate stuff out, and this is an instance where we almost have too many to try to track it.
Tell us about the clerk of the works stipend, $20,800.
That is, that was a week ago put into the DPW budget. That is work for me that's being picked up for the library.
Can I mention something on that, Sean?
Yeah, please.
Yeah. That was an adjustment in the job description by the selectmen, was adding in the clerk of the works position into the job description. There was a clerk of the works position that was approved on the classification plan years ago, and it's always just been sitting there, and sometimes it's been used, sometimes it hasn't. So it was put into the job description that he may be assigned at certain times for clerk of the works duties, not that he's the clerk of the works forever. So right now, we currently have a project that has had a large demand for a staff clerk of the works. So that's what the money is for, and we would expect it to go another year. But providing there are no other projects, that does drop off when the project ends.
Does that not qualify as one of those things that you would actually put into the library project budget, as opposed to putting it in the town buildings budget?
It should be, yeah. We went back and forth on where it should be, as far as where it should be shown.
Yeah.
But it's definitely going to be transferred over on that side as an expense.
We've asked town accounts to very carefully track all the expenses that we're going to be looking to recover from Five Star, including this cost and a bunch of others, because that is going to be part of our claim.
Yeah. Because I know it's just pushing numbers around, but 20,800 accounts for almost the entirety of the 23,900 increased expense in Town Buildings. So if you can just push that over into a library-associated account, it just makes the entire Town Buildings budget, like, practically flat.
Yeah, right. I think we've gone back and forth...
Well, we talked with the library, I think, we talked about it, and we, when we did this, it was decided that it shouldn't be carried on the library budget, but tracked as a library expense.
I think she's charging, like, an allocation to the library.
And this, like David said, this would come up, you know, say there's another project in a few years, you know, the clerk of the works would, in a clerk of the works position would be needed, then this is in there. But this year, it's budgeted because we know it's going to be, as everybody knows, it's going to continue to be needed into '21.
But did someone just say that we were hopeful that we might be able to recover from Five Star? And I thought, and my memory may be failing on this, but I thought that we were making an effort to anything that we thought could be associated with the library project, that we might try to recover. We were trying to put that in a separate...
Let's be careful how much we talk about that. We're an open session.
Okay. Good point.
As of Wednesday, it was in the DPW budget. It definitely should not be in the DPW budget. That's why those last, the last version of sheets got sent out from Sharon, I think, Thursday afternoon.
So now it's in the buildings?
Now, it's in Town Buildings right now.
Yeah, which probably is the appropriate place for it, just based on, like Sean said, we have to be careful.
Right. No, I understand.
With how much is discussed on it.
I'm just looking at it conceptually. I'm saying, Town Buildings expenses have gone up 8.5%, but then when you break it down, you're like, well, actually, in terms of running everything except for the library project, you've done a very good job of basically keeping it pretty flat. So it makes it a little harder to go through each of your other lines and be like, can you push this down, can you push this down, when 90-plus percent of your increase is for the clerk of the works?
So maybe Sharon's going to find a different place to put it.
Yeah. We could talk to Sharon and see if, you know, it is what it is. It's an expense somewhere in the budget, so.
To that point, I would add that I'm aware of how much kind of extra time Sean specifically has put into dealing with the library fiasco. And I know that some of the other roles that he, and duties that he has, have come under strain, and now Sean has put in the time to get everything done, which is greatly appreciated. So for me, I have no issue with the funding. Where it gets booked can be figured out, but if I may, Sean, so if I can keep going a little bit, there are a number of, I know that separate from that, essentially, the request on the expense side is flat, but there are still a number of budgets in there whereby there's still kind of market increases over kind of previous couple of years' numbers. And as we are truly fighting for every dollar at this point, compared, you know, the initial underbudgets, as noted, would put the estimated tax rate very high, and came in, actually, I think the number is almost $800,000 above total guidance. If I look down towards the bottom of some of your expense items here, just as an example, Town Hall new equipment looks like, you know, historically in previous years, the two most recent years, is looking at more towards 1,500, 1,300. The budget in fiscal '20 was 5,000. I don't know if you're going to spend the full 5,000 this year, but the ask is once again for 5,000. And similarly on Town Building Supplies and Materials, Town Building Supplies, same thing. We saw very small numbers in the actuals for '18 and '19. The budget for '20 are significantly higher rounded numbers, and you're asking for those same numbers again. I'm wondering if you're confident that you're going to be spending the full, you know, higher amounts that were requested for '20, '20, and if not, could you therefore then reduce the '20, '21 requests?
So the problem with looking at these line items is you lost the bucket of money you spent out of the capital.
Understood.
Because as this budget hits its ceiling, it just, we're drawing off of capital. And then it doesn't fall into these line items, so you don't have the history. We're spending capital money to operate our buildings, and we shouldn't be. So I can't really answer your question any better than that. These numbers don't really capture the whole thing.
But given, I guess what, in my own mind, I'm trying to make sense of is, given that that's true, and I'm sure it is, we have appropriated, you know, over $600,000 over the past couple of years for Town Buildings. If we look at what's being requested for this year and over the next five, it's close to, it's around another $750,000. At some point, when you look at the combination of those two, have we not solved the problem? And, you know, if both capital and the maintenance budgets keep going up every year by significant amounts, it just seems like we're in this spiral. I mean, we're increasing, if we were to agree to these budgets, we'd be increasing, you know, by very high percentages, you know, close to 20, 30% more, you know, from over the last three years, plus the capital.
Where do you see a 20, 30% increase here?
I'm not talking year over year. I'm talking about going back, if you look at it over three years.
You were short-funding it, and then funding it with the capital.
Yeah, but supposedly, though, the capital was supposed to be the antidote to that. So we've got both going on. And again, I'm not questioning the need to do these projects. I'm just saying, if we don't have the money to do them all, where are we going to pare back?
Jane, one thing, I don't know if it was supposed to be an antidote. I think it was more of a catch-up. That's the problem. We were so far behind. It wasn't going to repair it, and then you wouldn't need more repairs going forward. It was to catch up, and then you're going to have an annual expense, so we don't get in that predicament again.
And the $750,000 that we're looking at over the next five years, that's also additive to what we need if we increase the budget. I mean, it just seems like a lot of money, if you look at both of those buckets. And again, I'm not suggesting that it's not all important stuff. I just think, as a town, I think we have to draw some lines, because I just don't think we can afford it.
I don't give a choice. It's like saying you can't afford to put a roof on the school. I mean, we have to operate. It's what operating budgets do. Capital budgets, you can either short-fund it.
I think there's pain, and I think we need to spread the pain. I hear you.
So, and I'll continue to say this when we talk about buildings. The town neglected its buildings for decades. In the course of three years, we've built four of them.
I'm not disputing.
What do you think happened 20 years later, after we neglected them?
And I'm not disputing.
Huge expensive things break.
I hear you. I'm just saying...
So, it is what it is. And we have a very comprehensive analysis of the buildings and how far we are behind. So you say we're going to spend 750. They said we were almost $2 million behind. So you didn't foot the $2 million, and we're scrounging. You're not going to catch it. And we're going to have the same conversation about roads in a little while.
That initial, that initial report said we should be spending, what was it, like, over $2 million in the first year? And we didn't do that, because we, like you said, we took the pain and said, well, we're going to do what's absolutely necessary. So we reduced it to the 250 a year, or whatever we've been spending, or 450 last year, I think. But, so we're doing it in dribs and drabs, but that means it's going to be spread out as 750 over the next five years. To catch up with that $2.5 million, we should have spent three years, or two years ago, when they gave us that initial report.
I think that large amount also included an amount of like 400,000, 500,000 being put aside to build up, and...
As a capital reserve.
Yeah. So, but we didn't, I don't even know if we budgeted more than what they were agreeing should just be the put aside amount.
Right.
No, we didn't. I mean, we only did a few projects, and we really haven't spent much of this year's money, because a lot of it was tied to the, to the timing of the finish of the library. So we've held off on some of those projects. But, I mean, two to three years into what was a 10-year plan, isn't going to move the needle much, when you started off short to begin with. And again, a lot of this is just shift from the short-funded operating. When you look at this, some of these things look like an increase, but they're, oh, I'm just shifting them back on to operating from capital. And that was pretty much at the request of capital. I told them I wasn't going to spend much effort having that fight last year, because I pretty much lost it this year, because it kind of fell on deaf ears last year. So here we are. Garage doors are going to break. We're going to fix them, one way or the other. They shouldn't be capitalized. No one will argue that they should not be capitalized, as when they get expensed every year.
Do we have maintenance contracts with all of these line items for the HVAC, for the elevators, for certain equipment, or is it just whenever it's needed?
It depends. Some of them we do. We have contracts with the elevator service company, the alarm service company. Not, the HVAC, there's several different companies involved, because we're still, we have new equipment that was put in as a capital project at the police station. Here we don't. So there's not a contract. We're not doing that much, but we're fixing it. There's different companies working on different buildings.
So then the increases are just assuming something's going to break, and then it's going to be needed to be repaired, versus proactively saying, I'm going to get the tradesman in on a scheduled basis to look at the line item and say it's okay, or suggest some maintenance?
Both.
Because you're not going to call a plumber unless there's actually a plumbing problem. Like, but you have to have a budget line item in case there is a plumbing problem, as an example.
Okay.
Right. There's a fair amount of repairs in this building alone, that we know we're going to have.
So septic pumping, we have that scheduled, right?
Yeah.
Whatever tank we have, if we have a tank, we get it pumped, and that's scheduled.
Yeah.
So that's legitimate. Because usually capital items, and I don't know what our definition is for the capital, but it's, could be a certain dollar amount, and then anything with a life over three years. So if something does last for three years and then does break, it is eligible for a capital improvement. Now, I see your point that you could maintain it and extend that life, but certain items are just going to be capital by nature. They're non-consumable.
Right.
And I think Jane's point is, we're seeing the funds coming from both sides, capital and then the maintenance coming up. And I was going down the path that if we had legitimate contracts for the maintenance to defer capital, that would be positive.
Right. But that's not going to fix anything. A contract with an HVAC company is going to be just that. It's a contract with an HVAC company. It's not going to, it's not going to account for $5,000 worth of work in this building. Stuff just breaks. It's an old building. You wouldn't ever, the contract just strictly says, this is how you're going to, how much you're going to charge me an hour to fix, and you're going to go buy the parts. I mean, if the fan blows up in that unit, it needs to get fixed. The contract wouldn't have even covered that.
So that may be eligible for capital, if it's beyond three years and over a certain dollar amount. But with the maintenance contract, you're proactive, as you know. I'm not telling you anything you don't know. But there's a return on that investment in the operation, which adds comfort to seeing both sides go up, the capital going up and the operating going up. Because the operating is going to kind of be insurance that the capital will only be for the true catastrophic.
Right.
I think you see...
Well, some of that has to do with the difference between, we've never had a facilities manager as of two and a half years ago, and now we do. So some of that isn't just, you know, blindly having a contract, because we've had those with a couple HVAC companies. We fired all of them over the course of time. But the guy that knows the most about this building is staring at you right now. I know a lot about what needs to get done, and I hire contractors to come in and fix certain items. There's a history of a lot of repairs for this building. It's aging. It was remodeled in '99. A lot of its systems are coming of age. So A, you know you're going to have to fix things. B, yeah, there's a point where you spend a little bit more fixing some stuff and not have catastrophic failures, but contract's not going to get you out of it. I'm doing the best I can to be proactive with it.
One thing, Peter, to look at too, I know we're not to the capital section yet, but when you look at his facilities, capital improvement schedule over the next six years, it does go down. We have a couple of big years to finally get caught up on everything, but then it goes down to less than $100,000. In some years, barely anything for capital on these buildings. So it doesn't both keep going up. It's, you know, we've had this ramp up with capital improvements, but then because he's maintaining a level of repairs and maintenance, the goal is that those capital improvements do go down eventually. Does that make sense?
And I want to point out also with the capital portion, that the capital is primarily being drawn from the Onsite Insight reports. I know there was at least one day when Keisha and Sean went through every single Town Building, and they went line by line through all of the parts of the Onsite Insight report, and said, all right, Onsite Insight says this. And they would go and look at the thing that was supposed to be replaced, and decide, okay, was it already done? Does it actually need to be replaced? Can you push this one off a little bit? And so I think that the Town Buildings capital schedule has basically been informed by that. I do believe that that Onsite Insight report is sort of due for a refresher, and I think that there's a discussion of getting them back in here to basically review everything, and basically if we can reset that report, it would be good. But I don't believe that the capital plan, schedule for Town Buildings for the next six years veers significantly, if at all, from the Onsite Insight report. So personally, I'm pretty comfortable with the entire Town Building situation, given that the capital plan is basically based on Onsite Insight, and that the expenses are basically flat, aside from that clerk of the works position. So, I mean, I, when I look through this, I don't see a great deal that we are going to be able to cut out of this, unfortunately, without basically shooting ourselves in the foot.
Steve, do you remember how old that inside Onsite report is? I should remember it, I don't.
Four years now.
Four years. Yeah, probably is time for a refresher, I would imagine.
Well, we, and we were going to, we had intended, I basically committed to having it for this fall. We almost had them scheduled, but, I mean, everyone's time's been pretty strapped with the library. Because the original intent was, we'd refresh it and do a first walkthrough at the library at the same time. So the intention was that would, we'd have that data now, that we'd be moved in the library. That didn't happen. And not that the library would need work, but it would at least set the schedule going out, you know, at least for all the end of year, end-of-life predictions. Hopefully, we can do that next spring and, or summer, at least with the walkthrough of all the other buildings. Because it is, it is a little bit dated. It obviously doesn't... Because it is, it is a little bit dated. It obviously doesn't, not everything jives with when they said we were gonna do it and what we did. So it'll be better to reset it. That comes with a cost, too.
In terms of cost, the original inside onsite report was done with a state grant. I was just confirming that with Dave. I mean, that was, the report itself didn't cost us anything.
So I hear you, and I'm not a fan generally of pushing off maintenance so that you get to the point where you have capital expense. But given how tight our budgets are, and given that interest rates are low, and Heidi, I don't know if you would want to comment on any of this, but, you know, are we in a situation where until we pick up revenue from some of the other, you know, projects that are going on in town or that we hope will go on in town, would we be better off, even if it's not the ideal situation, in capitalizing some of this? You know, making it part of the capital budget rather than increasing the maintenance right now? And again, I'm not generally a fan of that, but I'm just wondering if, given the circumstances that we're in, if that's the better choice at this point, and if so-
To do no capital? Is that what you said?
No, to do more capital.
Towards capital. As a capital improvement expense, as a capital-
That's what we've been doing, right?
No, but I'm just saying, should we be pushing that more, not because we want to, but because that is the best choice we can make in a low-interest rate environment and in a tight, you know, budget environment?
I don't even think it's legal to do that.
I think you have some day-to-day, Jane, there's also day-to-day things that come up, like that he has to have a certain level of maintenance and repair budget for day-to-day problems.
Yeah, to be clear, I'm not suggesting that you don't have a maintenance budget and it all go into capital. I'm saying that if, to Peter's point about, you know, some things legitimately, you know, could be capital expenses. I mean, it's a judgment call as to whether you wanna put more maintenance and make them have a longer useful life, or whether you wanna just capitalize them every so often. Is this a situation where there are some things that we could be making part of the capital budget rather than increasing the maintenance budget right now?
So-
You get the money one way or another.
Yeah.
Right.
But I don't think he really is-
I wanna, maybe, there's nothing in here that's not just repairs. Right. There's no proactive work in this budget. Zero. I'm not, like, looking down the shaft of the elevator and thinking, you know, I should go down there and paint all those pipes. That comes up when the state inspector comes out and says, bring the elevator guy out here and paint those pipes, and it costs a bunch of money. That happened this year at the fire station. That was unforeseen. The budget covered it. That wasn't, that's not a capital expense. It just, that comes up all the time. The door stops working on the elevator. We're not covering any of the proactive stuff. I'm not asking to replace the doors on the elevator right now. That would be capital. This barely covers fixing the building and keeping the lights on. That's all that's in here. I hope I didn't portray that I'm doing any preventative stuff in this budget. It's not happening.
No, I wasn't trying to-
Other than, you know, vendors coming and doing some PMs on the boiler and stuff, we're doing that. But there's no equipment, real, serious equipment rehabs. The roof on this building's gonna start leaking pretty soon. If it's not, that's not in here. That's in the capital. If we wanna push capital out another year, that's fine. I'm not exactly looking for extra stuff to do at night. We're strapped for time and resources to get projects done, but there's really nothing we can shave out of this budget. Anything you shave out of this budget, it's coming from somewhere else. It's not even discretionary spending. It's being spent.
And I guess, sorry, I guess that's just part of my issue, right, when I look at the operating budget? Again, down low, and I know it's minor stuff towards the bottom of your expenses, but town building supplies and materials, right? Five grand is, was the ask for 2020, five grand is the ask for 2021. In the previous years, it was 4,000 or 1,700. And I get it, we're readjusting, it used to all come out of a big bucket, and now we're kind of, we are trying to delineate and be more specific about all the asks. Look, I stare at budgets a lot. Just like you know the pipes in the buildings, right? Between the nine of us up here, we know the budget pretty well, as well as used to apartment head individually. But I keep looking at these things. I look at it a lot, and I think to myself, okay, can you knock off a grand here? Can you knock off two grand there? If you're telling me you take it from one line, it's gonna pop up on another line eventually anyways, then I guess it's pointless to do that, but-
And Steve, you can look at, if you just look at his total, like, you can look at all those individuals.
Yep.
Look at his total, I mean, his budget is the same as his three-year average. So he is spending every dollar on the buildings that, that he's budgeting. I think this one, some of those, you look at the three-year average, and you're like, oh, it's going, you know, do they really need to be increasing? But this one, I think in particular, as Stephen said, is, there's really nowhere to shave on this one.
It might be more productive if I came back with a, with a detailed report. Or you guys ask for a detailed report, and you can just look at what's in there on the expense side. Either this partial year or do all of last year and look at. Because again, it doesn't, I didn't set these, these up, and we really didn't change anything going to Vadar because we, it's confusing enough as it is looking at these after looking at the same sheets for so many years. Eventually, we should rebuild this one in particular and a couple others, I think. But, you know, I spend a fair amount of time just staring at where I'm at the particular year and where we were the couple of years prior. It's hard to stick, sit here and, I mean, I don't wanna have 40 pages, you know, fumbling around. It's hard to paint that picture with this because it, they don't, it doesn't really match. But fact is, we're spending it. I'm doing the best I can to reduce it. But when the rates are, when the electric rates and gas rates are doing what they're doing, it's gonna move the needle more than anything I can do.
Just on the question of a maintenance budget and capital budget. This board of selectmen and prior boards of selectmen had advocated for all of the building needs that the town needed to do. And many voters asked the question, is the town gonna stop letting the buildings run into the ground? Are we actually gonna take care of it if we do this kind of investment? And we have told the voters, and I think we've made commitments to voters, that we're gonna take care of our buildings. We're not gonna let them slide into the same kind of mess that brought us to the point of having to spend all this money over the last five, 10 years. I don't think we should be talking about cutting these bare-bones budgets to keep these buildings preserved so that they will last longer. I think that's very short-sighted. We don't spend the money that Sean is looking for in these budgets. We're gonna have to do much more expensive things much quicker than we had ever planned to do. And that's not fair to future tax-aging.
I don't disagree, Paul. The same taxpayers, maybe different taxpayers, ask me why the tax rate's so high. And they say, gosh, even though the tax rate went down a little bit, taxes still went up this year. And so, you know, this is the crux of why we're all meeting here, right? Is that there is a lot that needs to get done, and I do not doubt that the maintenance of these buildings, which has been neglected, needs to get done to preserve these capital items. And this is what you do with an asset, right? Once you purchase the asset, you finance it over a long time, and you make the thing last as long as you can with maintenance.
Sean, I commend you. You do have a three-year plan here. 19, 20 budget, 21 budget seems to be actually going down for each of these line items. And I said I would advocate continuing with that plan with the capital.
What'd you just jump to? Oh, you're on capital?
No, 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 I'm still on the buildings. Why are we on, are we going to ruin-
No, we're not. We're not. I was trying to keep the computer from shutting itself down.
But I'm just seeing the trend for three years. You said you've been here for two years, and you've been consistent each year in terms of total dollars for the buildings, in terms of the operation, filling in with the capital. And I believe that your three-year approach at the end of next fiscal year should bear the fruit you're looking at, having the resources to stem the dilapidation of the buildings, improving them and putting capital where it's needed. So, I commend you for that control of the budget and looking at each line item as you do.
Sean, do you know offhand how many square feet, how many, how many square feet of town buildings you're managing? Or how much, how much square footage does this $300,000 budget going to maintain?
No, I don't.
No? I mean, I think, everything I've heard today, I, I don't think that it's gonna be fruitful. I'm just gonna repeat what I've heard a couple people say. It's not gonna be very fruitful to quibble with a budget that, I, you know, I just don't have, I just don't have the experience to know, like, what it costs, and you're the guy who manages it. So I take your word that this is what it costs to do these jobs. I think that maybe the more fruitful question in the long run is, are maintenance costs comparable, like, do our maintenance costs reflect kind of the right balance? Are we comparable with other towns? And, you know, what do we do in the long run to make sure that we're driving those costs down? They should be sustainable, but in the long run, like, you know, I don't, I don't wanna be in a place where we're paying two, three, four times what another town pays for maintenance. If, you know, if we're right on target, if we're paying less than other towns, if we're paying less than what the average commercial maintenance budget is per square foot, then, you know, that's great. I think at that point, we just have to live with this. But at this point, I think we need, we just need to know where we stand in terms of the cost of maintenance relative to the square footage that we have and the type of property that we have. And if we can, if we can do some things to drive that down, we can investigate that. If we can't, then I think maybe we need to ask ourselves as a town going forward, do we need this amount of square footage? Or do we make do with less?
Well, I like your idea because you're comparing it to, if we had to go out and rent the town hall at $13 triple net per square foot, how would we administrate the buildings? That would be the market rate. What's our comparable cost per square foot? As if you're running a real estate company. Now, you don't have the day-to-day year yet for each building, each square foot and the cost associated with that. But eventually, that's an economic question, is, is it more costly to build, to buy, rent, or lease, or maintain? And we're not there yet. We have to get to that point and then say, yes, to maintain this building, it costs less than if we rented some commercial place down the street.
I think, and I think those metrics make sense if you're dealing with comparables. I thought from the time we moved into town, that Pine Hill, when it was built, was done on the cheap, and we've been paying ever since for it. So, that broad metric makes sense so long as you're dealing with comps. You know, the cost of maintaining Pine Hill, I would be shocked if it didn't work higher than most comparable schools were hopefully built a little better.
100 million. You build a school for 100 million, your maintenance costs aren't gonna be very great. Try and build a school for eight, nine, 10 million. Sherburne is famous for doing an almost perfect job of building buildings. And we always, when we get to the end of the project, we start, you know, can we cut this out? Can we not do this? And sometimes we're any, any wise and powerful-
No bullshit.
Where it's better to spend the money, do it right, have that asset. In the long run, it benefits the taxpayers.
All right. Steve, do you wanna move on to the next budget, or are there more? I think we've kind of talked this one through.
We have talked it through. Do I want to move on? No, because the expenses are still there and we need to get lower numbers there. However, I don't know that that would be fruitful for further discussion at this point in time. So, in effect, yes, maybe we probably should move on. Within, so, Sean, as far as the budget presentations go, do you wanna do capital now for town buildings?
No.
Or do you wanna go to the DPW?
I ruled the capital all in one quick, brief summary. So let's get through DPW and then-
Okay.
Which one?
Capital.
Is DPW the tab that says-
It still says CM and D in our books.
I don't even know what that is.
Diane?
Let's vote to change the name.
Oh, we did that.
Who did that?
All right. Again, there was a couple last-minute changes with some salary lines, which, this is kind of the growing pains of Vadar. You kind of have to catch it on a PDF sheet that gets sent out, then go back to the, what we used to call the Form 5, which everyone was used to looking at, which had all the salaries. And then, if you find an error, shoot it back. So, these sheets changed, I think, Thursday night again, partially with that, you know, the stipend, and then there was some others. There's still a few other things that'll happen, and we're not gonna talk too much about my salary lines because it's union. We can talk about some of the changes we're into this year. We've, you know, we already had one gentleman retire. We have a couple more coming. It's, it's not fixed exactly when that's gonna happen. That may or may not all happen this fiscal year. So the salary line may be overstated, and I haven't gone over this with David yet, as far as what we should shave out of it. But in essence, there's some expenses being picked up as a result of that. I mean, one of the major expenses that bumped up this year is vehicle maintenance. We had a mechanic retire. He's 41 and 1/2 years here. So it would be silly to think that all the vehicle maintenance is gonna be at the same cost, unless I had someone with that much experience to replace him. So some of that shifts to an expense. And it possibly nets out because we may or may not have as much expense on the salary side of mechanic in next year. Again, we're seeing that right, that's during this fiscal year, but it may carry into next year.
So right now, you're not spending for the mechanic. When do you think you'll replace him, if you had to guess? And I know it's difficult.
Again, we haven't talked through all the changes yet, so I don't really wanna get ahead of it. I mean, he's been temporarily replaced with someone that was there, but that just leaves a trailing void on the other side. So the salary lines are still way down, right now and possibly in the next year. Well, some corresponding expenses, whatnot.
One question I have on your expenses is the addition of the line item for the traffic details. Was that not in your budget prior, or did that come out of the police budget? Because all of a sudden, this year, there's a $16,000 budget, whereas it, last year, there was no budget for that line item. It's on the last, it's on page four.
Page four. I'm on the 60-something page.
Oh, this is, this is on the-
I want it on page 38.
The summary report of, I think, all your budgets combined, because you have multiple ones. And it shows, it's 429 is the category, but it's traffic detail police.
I'll just get to 429. That, well, that's misstated. There was a budget there last year.
Okay.
But is that not part of the police budget?
No, it's never been part of the police budget. And, and I'm not sure where a transfer landed somewhere wrong, I think, and we need to find it. Because that, remember, that was a, last year, there was a huge reserve fund transfer. Is that correct? Yeah, we used a reserve fund last year.
To pay for details?
To pay, well, to pay for trees and details.
Right, which, I know it included details.
Ah. And it should have landed on that line. Uh, and it should've landed on that line.
It does look funky, though. The actual for 2019 is negative 11,000, and I...
I think all the actuals do come in as negatives, though.
Yes, the actuals do come in as negative.
They do, but it, it's way understated at 11,000.
Showing that there was zero budget in 2020.
Yeah, which is...
Which doesn't make any sense.
So do we just think that that zero is an error? Like, it wasn't actually budgeted at zero?
Well, not only was it not budgeted at zero, but the FY19 was north of 30,000.
Right.
Deb, do you have any thoughts on that?
I don't know where it went.
I wanna say, when we transferred over in VEDAR, we checked all the budgets. So if it's not in that line item, it's somewhere else, because that total is pretty much the total after...
Right. There are true, two, uh, lines for details. There's one under land management, one under highway.
I'm talking about the one under land, that's what the LM stands for then, 'cause it's land management, traffic detail, police. And it was... It says fiscal year 20, budget of zero, and then your, this request is 16,000.
Yeah, the highway traffic is level funded at 25.
Right.
Right, so that's...
And, and the difference is, the highway covers most everything.
Mm-hmm.
Land management is trees.
Trees, right. And I assume that's why the contractual services are up 15,000 as well, 'cause that's just, you know you're gonna be contracting that much more with Stanley for tree services?
Um...
'Cause you have contract trees, you have contractual services and traffic detail, but is that all related to trees?
Well, it's just not Stanley, it's LUPES. Stanley's is the ever source.
Oh, okay. Those are the trucks I see all over town.
Yeah, we'd love to be contracting with Stanley, 'cause ever source gets like a 30, 40% lower rate.
So that, back to that question, the land management for contract trees, contractual services and traffic details, are that all trees?
No, it's not all trees. Contractual services is, um, maintenance around the buildings.
That's land management contractual, oh.
Yeah.
Your budget confuses me, because it's spread out amongst so many...
Well, there's also no such thing as land management. Again, this is a budget that needs to get rebuilt.
Right. 'Cause there's highway, then there's snow, then there's land management.
Yeah, I know, I didn't create this mess. I'm just trying to...
I think it just makes it confusing to read, in a way. I mean, 'cause it looks like you have 31,000 in increases between those two line items, contractual services and traffic detail.
Right.
And that's related to tree, um, my question is...
Well, part of that is related to the fact that it's not an increase when a budget got zeroed out that wasn't really zero.
Right, okay.
But Sean, the budget in total is, is accurate, so that it didn't get zeroed out. It, it's just probably showing up in one of the departments.
Yeah, it's just a reconciling item between the way they did it before VEDAR and now in VEDAR, so that's...
So the...
Well, but the problem is that the, the tree work that was done under the reserve fund somehow didn't end up in here. It's not being represented in, 'cause that was 100, either 100 or 150,000 dollar reserve fund.
I guess the underlying question is, why are the expenses up 85? 'Cause you said the whole budget number's right for both this and what you're budgeting. So what's driving the $85,000 increase in expenses?
I'm telling you, it can't be right. I, I know for a fact, I signed off on a $100,000 reserve fund, and it's not in there. It should've hit this budget.
You're saying your operating expenses aren't...
My 2019 oper, actual is understated.
Okay. I think we, we need to, not so much the 19 actual, I'm looking at budget 20 versus budget 21, and that's an $85,000 increase. And I'm saying, what's the driver behind that? I know you have the maintenance, the vehicle maintenance is one item.
Well, I'd never budgeted zero on, on police details.
Right, right, I'm just, so I, so what you're saying is, we really need to have this budget looked at again and, and figure out...
Possibly, but...
'Cause I think there needs to be a better summary of where, 'cause that is a large increase in expenses. I'm not saying it's not justified, I'm just confused as to what makes up the $85,000 change.
10,000 of it is the snow, where we just had the, the fill-in of 2,000 was ludicrous.
Yeah.
And at our, that was, that was us that said, that's a ludicrous number.
Right.
And we pushed for, so it's now 12.
Right. And then there's 13,000 in catch basins. I assume that's a real increase, 'cause you have to clean those out, so...
Yeah, well, and, you just jump off a page.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the bigger number increases.
Yes, well, let's talk about, we've always called it catch basins, and, um, we clean catch basins every year. There's a contractor. That contract includes, um, hauling the, um, catch basin cleanings out. We also have to truck out all of the street sweepings. And because we put massive amounts of sand down on the roads, we have to pick up massive amounts of sand. When we pick it up, it's the single most expensive thing we can truck out of the yard.
Yeah, I know, we've talked about that.
And we get to haul it to Rhode Island. So that cost has to be accounted for.
Can't you use it the next year?
I wish. No, it's contaminated.
It's considered contaminated.
It's deemed contaminated, so it has to be sent to a DEP approved site, or to Rhode Island.
Or it's down.
Their active provisions is beneficial use determinations, but DEP being it's so difficult to make that trigger, it's near impossible to reuse, um, to reuse, uh, local sand.
Yeah, I tried to do that.
And no one can make it happen. They did it as a field day thing. It's similar to their recycling policy.
Right.
Build a new library with it?
Jane?
Well, George, I, I appreciate you were at the high level, but I think maybe given where we are, we just should go to the line items that have big increases and, and understand better why that is the case.
Yeah.
I, I'd like to do that. I mean, even going back to salaries, I know you've said there may be some savings with salaries, but there is a, um, it looks like, I don't know if it's a new position, or...
Admin permanent PT.
Yeah, admin permanent part-time, going up by 20, 27,000 dollars.
It's on the very first page, Paul.
Section, uh, section 421, or Department 421. CMD administration.
The admin permanent part-time.
Right. So, I was waiting for you guys to find the page.
Paul's, Paul's, I just go to the first page.
So over the course of six, eight, or 10 years, I'm not sure when it happened, the, um, the hours for the admin assistant was decreased. Um, so it was really, it was being covered he, with Jeannie Guthrie here. As we continue to shift workload out, um, we're obviously gonna see salary lines of, of workers possibly decreasing, but there's still just as much, if not more, admin work needed. So we're shifting more towards that. Um, that's temporary in nature right now, but it need, it, it needs to increase. I didn't have an admin assistant at the building at all, up until...
And Jeannie was kinda covering for that?
What's that?
Jeannie was...
Jeannie was doing that. Now, um, she's still doing most of her function, um, and there's another person down there now with me. Again, this is, this is a year we're going through losing two gentlemen, through retiring, I should say, with 41 and a half and 42 years, and then another foreman. So there's a lot of turnover down there, it's gonna take a lot of work.
Yeah, but you'll pick those guys back up, and those salaries will be back on the budget for the following year, right?
Well, I didn't say that. Not all of them, well. The, I mean, there's some structural changes. One is gonna come out of the union upon...
And probably who you're putting there won't be 41 years experienced, likely to have a lower pay scale, I would assume.
No.
But still, at, at some point, aren't you gonna put those back on?
It's a longer term discussion. That, but that's what I'm saying. I, I gotta go through this with David, 'cause I have another sheet, the, again, the Form 5, where it's decreased by, didn't print right, or maybe it's in here, uh, over 100,000 that could be offset. But I, I wouldn't present that here without talking to David and going through the logistics of it. It's not gonna stay where it is, I can tell you that.
And that is salaries for 420 or 421?
That gets a little confusing.
I'll be, what, good question, David.
I'm not the only one?
Again, I didn't create this. I don't know why they're in several different places. On the form, it shows, again, when, in the union contract right now, when the general foreman retires, he doesn't get replaced inside the union, he comes out of the union. So in theory, it's gonna go from, it's in 420, it, it may and should be reflected in 421. But again, I can't tell him when he's retiring, so whether it's in 420 or 421, doesn't really matter. Um, because we're not, you're not, we're not voting a difference there.
No, but my question was just about the, um, almost $28,000 in additional administrative support. I think you said the job was getting done last year by Jeannie, and now we seem to be adding more administrative support. I'm not sure why that 28,000 in additional administrative support is necessary this year. Do you try to understand that better?
Not sure, but that kind of... Is administrative support going to assist with some of the NFTs permits? I know that has a fair administrative side to it.
It, heavily towards that, because this year, we have to be doing admin work in year two, in the, in our year two. We also have about five other projects we're starting this year, sorry.
I mean, there is something I was gonna talk about more on the capital side, but it seems like we've talked about the street sweepings, the administrative support and the catch basin cleanings. Uh, right now, across Massachusetts, might be up to almost 20 communities are starting to adopt a different revenue source for stormwater, treating it like utility. I mean, small towns like Millis and large towns like Newton are, um, are adopting a new enterprise fund to actually do, essentially create a fee, a user fee, for, um, stormwater and to support the stormwater. And the state is actually setting up grants to help communities do that. It's, it's, it'd be something that probably take a year or two even to establish and start acquiring revenue, but something the advisory committee may wanna consider.
So what's a user fee for stormwater?
It's basically based on purview area, which kinda dictates how much stormwater your property generates. So you get paid essentially when, uh, you know, the more purview area you have, the more you pay, the less you have, the less you pay. As advantages to, I don't know how much it'll affect your, actually now, you can actually, um, so commercial buildings will pay more, government buildings that are exempt from tax will actually pay this fee as well, nonprofits will pay this fee, entities even like CSX will pay this fee, uh, based on purview area, you look at like a dec, it'll be a big fee. You know, they'll probably only align share of it to some degree there. And it's set up and it dedicates a certain fund, really, it's usually an enterprise fund, not a revolving fund, and we can see how it works out. And it'll pay for like, you know, I think Sean's proposing a $300,000 or $200,000, um, NFTs compliance fee. It can pay for street sweepings, it can pay for, um, catch basin cleanings, even part like, you know, administrative support or whatever consulting fees you need to do to cover the NFTs permit. Or to cover really stormwater. Doesn't have to be NFTs permit, it can be stormwater in general. But the NFTs permit is kind of making that happen, and that's pushing several communities around the state to start adopting this, uh, this utility.
I think what Eric's also saying on that is, there's a lot more administrative work every year, based on state requirements, that the DPW is required to do.
And if they adopt this fee, it can be even partially funded by that as well.
And probably a lot of those things are more efficiently done by an admin, part-time admin assistant than Sean sitting behind a desk, filling out all the state paperwork that he has to do.
And we have been, uh, reducing that admin number for about five years straight, each year, shifting, or just dropping the hours off public works to get it down to like four hours, I think, was what it was at, at the lowest.
But you were dropping it off there, yet it was still getting done by some, like Jeannie, like you said, Jeannie was doing it, but we were covering it.
Yeah, I mean, we had asked Jeannie, like, how many hours do you actually think you're doing on public works? And she said, well, about four hours. And I was like, that can't be. But she said it was, so that's what we had been working down to. But it seems like it's going the other way now. So that there's a lot more admin assistance needed.
So David...
Right, and Jeannie didn't have the capacity to continue to do the increased work, so...
David, this follows up on a question I had earlier. For this line item, 5120, admin permanent PT, it's, it's not union, so it's an employed position. And so to get this 250% increase, did it go through a process where, as HR director, you looked at that and evaluated it? The personnel board weighed in, yes or no?
When I look at this, I see additional hours for Jeannie's position, and then I see additional part-time help. I don't see one position here. I don't think this is just one position. But...
But there was a process that this went through that everyone else would go through?
For, add, no, not really, not, not, I mean, if we were adding a new position, it definitely goes through a process. But if we're just increasing in the budget for part-time assistance, that's seasonal assistance, that's, um, part-time temporary assistance. Um, I mean, even we pay out of our part-time assistance line at certain times of the year for somebody else to come in, and it's a, it's a temporary seasonal thing.
So the department comes and asks, and it's, it's determined, weighed, evaluated?
Well, there, they would have a part-time budget already approved, and that's what it would be, that's what they'd be using from. They wouldn't come in and say, say the collector's office has part-time assistant line, and through the year, she uses certain, at certain times, brings in extra help. She wouldn't come to us for those extra helps, uh, you know, however many hours a week it is, 'cause it's not really a position, it's part-time seasonal assistance, supplemental part-time. So this is not, this isn't expanding Jeannie's position beyond what had been, um, uh, you know, budgeted for hours in the past. It's probably, how many hours for Jeannie in this, you think? Probably eight?
Yeah.
And then the rest is part-time assistance, but there's no position that's been created. So he has additional help right now that he's paying as part-time help. But that position is a supplemental position that has not been created and it's not permanent.
Again, there's a lot going on in personnel, and we're gonna move on, because I'm, it's not in a condition right now to be presented to you.
Okay.
Okay? Let's just not talk about the personnel right now.
To move on then, you know, a couple that caught my attention. I'll do the catch basin and the guard rail replacement under Department 422, CMD Highway.
Each 204.
So we just, we just discussed the catch, maybe you asked...
Yeah, we did the catch basins, we already talked about that.
But, but I'm not clear on why the cost is so much more this year.
So, catch base, a couple reasons. One, the MS4 permit is requ, is having certain requirements on how frequently we sweep the streets and clean the storm drains. So previously, this line item was just, it, it's still, I named it something different on our sheet, on our other sheet, but it, it says catch basins, it's also street sweepings. Not to pick 'em up, we pick 'em up, but we generate almost 300 tons of material that has to leave town every year, that gets hauled out by a contractor.
But that would've been true every other year. So why, we're just trying to understand why...
Well, it would've been true, but when I started, we had two years of street sweeping sitting in the yard, so I've been whittling it down. Um, the, the prior year before I started, we didn't remove any. So we had nearly 600 tons of material in the yard, and we've been slowly trying to catch up. We finally just caught up last month. So it's gone up, because we neglected to do it. The budget didn't reflect what it needed to reflect before. We cannot do that under the MS4 permit. We're not allowed to store it indefinitely in the yard. It's against our operating procedures at the, at the site there. So that's capturing the real cost, and there's very little we can do, um, if we, there's longer conversations about how much sand we put down in the winter that we can have, but, um, that's a different conversation. It's gotta get picked up.
Any guard rail replacement line, the extra 10G?
We're in the point now where there's a lot of guard rails that got replaced about 15 to 20 years ago. We, as a town, chose to put in the guard rails that rust. Um, I, I'm not proposing we replace large sections of them right now, but what keeps happening is we have accidents, um, where, you know, say 50 or 100 feet of guard rail will get hit and destroyed as a result of the accident. Obviously, the insurance company pays for that, but there's a limit to how many panels they're gonna pay to replace when the, the 20 feet before it and the 30 feet after the accident are so rusted that they fell off, or they're gonna fall off. So we're getting caught with these expenses that are coming up, 'cause obviously, I'm, it's, it's in our best interest, when the contractor's gonna come, shut the road down, replace those panels on someone else's dime, we pick up the cost of, of... of, of either making it to the end of the run or to a better section. Otherwise, we're going to have a new section, a section that's falling off. And we didn't, we didn't gain at least the cost sharing of the police details and the work. So we, we're continually having to do that. Other, other places, trees are falling on them and they're so weakened by the rust that the tree crushes them. They're all, if you drive, anyone driving home can, if you're looking at the guard rails when you're driving by, you're going to see pieces that are just broken off, sticking out towards the road. Dents on them, that's from a tree falling on them. Those, those need to get fixed.
And broken guard rails are a liability to the town, right?
Well...
Somebody where they, I mean...
Yes. They definitely, there's a risk that by not fixing them, someone's going to go through them and, and we're liable, possibly.
You think replacement core 10, that suffers and tended to rust, just because it's...
Those are core 10.
Yeah. It looks nice there. It does have a good appearance. Galvanized, doesn't look nice in a wooded area like this, but they'll last to half, twice as good.
Yeah. The, when we're doing small sections, we're doing them in core 10, ironically, the ones that rust cost more. So when we're only doing small sections, I'm allowing them to be replaced that way. You notice on Maple Street, that's galvanized. It's, it's important that it be safe. They also, they stopped making the terminal ends in core 10. There's a lot of engineering that goes into the end of guard rails so that people don't get impaled with them. And then there's a couple of them that are all over town that aren't being offered anymore. So if it gets hit by a car, it has to be replaced. On Whitney Street, there's two of them that are galvanized and the rest of it's not. So we'll have a future discussion in a, in a year or two about how much money we start putting towards it or perhaps getting a grant. But we have to have some money in the budget to cover the ones that have to get fixed.
This is the one we cut last year. I know you'd asked for more and we reduced it. How long do new best of breed guard rails last if no one hits them and a tree doesn't fall off?
The galvanized ones or the ones that rust?
The good ones.
Oh, 30 or 40 years probably.
Those are the galvanized ones.
That's, with the life of 30 or 40 years, that could be a capital project.
Oh, it will definitely be a capital project. This is only covering short sections.
Core 10 will go 20 years this year.
Yeah, I don't know that we got 20 out of many of ours, but...
And what's our spend rate already? Have we fixed the ones? I know it's 5,000 budgeted this year. Have you had to...
We spent five times that.
Already, just to fix the broken ones?
Yeah, well, right. And that, well, we paid for that one on, the, the, the short one on Maple we did after we made those repairs was, I think that was 15 or 18,000.
And that's just the material and labor, not the police, the police detail?
That one, we probably captured. Ah, that might have been the police details. I mean, just to show up in most places, you're going to spend 500 dollars on police details because you need two of them. Because the truck takes up the whole lane while they're working. It's a couple trucks. So it's, I mean, it's expensive to go out there and do it. And we have a lot of them.
So Sean, if I, if I may, so the, so the catch basins as part of this MS3, MS4, some changes, we have to do that. The guard rail replacement, I get it that there's a liability, I'm all about reducing liability. But if one said, hey Sean, you got to give up 10G, would you give it up there?
No.
Okay. The, in between those two, at least of the budget that I'd look at, the highway road and sidewalk materials, which was 85 grand last year, 85 grand, or sorry, 85 grand is your budget for the current year, 85 grand is proposed for the next year. That's again, highway, road and sidewalk materials under this Department 422. Up significantly from the previous years, is that a re-categorization of spending you were doing anyways, or why that is so radically different than it had been in years past? And again, the fact that you got the budget at the moment of 85K means we probably went through this last year? I just need an explanation once again.
That, over the course of 10 years, was continuing to go down. That was one of the line items, because it's one of the bigger ticket line items. Each year, your predecessors would ask, did Ed shave something? And that was the biggest line item to shave. That's the only place to buy materials for all the roads, other than the Chapter 90 work right now. So if you drive down Pleasant Street and bust a tire or an axle, Chuck?
So, so sorry, this is, this is not like the snow and ice clearing, this is fixing roads.
That's what buys the asphalt, to put it down, unless we're doing a Chapter 90.
That we got last year?
Yeah. And that's, that's everything we buy to, to, to put down on the road. So anytime we're working on the roads, other than the one or two or three big projects we do, that's where that comes from. That's also what pays for that project on Maple Street. We were out there for a couple, you know, a week and a half. That was a lot of money. That's where that came from.
Do you think you'll rip through the 85K that you budgeted this year?
Absolutely. We also use that, it's, if we're subcontracting work, to do some of the work, whether, you know, if, if we hire a contractor to come in and, and make structural repairs to, you know, catch basin lids, everything else, that's, that's where a lot of that's coming from. It's really my, my biggest spending item. It possibly shouldn't all be all in that one bucket, but it is.
How about tools and equipment? There was a 100% increase, dues, permits and licenses a 50% increase. What's driving those?
Which, there's a couple different tools.
With Department, I don't think, what's the number?
420, 5530.
Which page are you on? Page 3?
Well, I'm looking at the roll-up, so I'm on page 2 of the roll-up.
General tools and equipment went from 5 to 10, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah. So any tools under the threshold of capital need to come out of the budget, but we were practically at zero with tools and equipment a couple of years ago when I started. And it shows. They didn't have a concrete cutting saw. Actually, mine is still there. It's a couple thousand dollars, my personal saw. They really hadn't been buying any equipment at all. So we need to upgrade that. There's some serious safety risks to using some of the older tools that they had. It's, it's pretty much anything under the capital threshold. And you can imagine a highway department doesn't just have all capital tools.
So what would be, what are some things that would be included in that?
Chainsaws, mowers, concrete saws, jackhammers, except we bought a couple last year with the, with the compressor, plate compactor.
Okay. We're discussing a lot of items here, but we're not making a lot of progress as far as reducing the operating budget, which is kind of part of the goal, in getting some, some movement forward here. Because again, the overall budget for the town, the, what's been asked of all the departments in total, is much higher than guidance.
So I have a suggestion.
Please, I was going to actually ask for suggestions from the select board.
So there's an oddity of Massachusetts law that says that for snow and ice, if you have an excess over your prior year's budget, you can deficit spend. And this year, we're increasing that budget by $10,000, bottom line. We don't need to do that because if we have a, a bad winter, which fortunately so far seems to be pretty good.
That's what you're saying.
But if we have a bad year, we can deficit spend and pay that out over a two-year period rather than having to tax taxpayers for it now and have it there in case we have to use it. So it's like the legal budget where you want to lowball your budget and add to it as you need it rather than appropriate a lot of money and have this extra. If you appropriate a lot of money, that's such a new floor.
Yep.
And so you can't deficit spend for that money that you've increased it by. So most communities have kept the same level for decades because they know that that gives them a safety cushion. So why should Sherburne increase that line item by that $10,000? You don't need to do it.
You don't need to do it for accounting purposes, but I don't know if it's fiscally there are...
We've talked about this every year for the last, as many years as I've been on advisory and the select board.
Let me tell you where that came from. Go back to the gasoline line item, it's $10,000 short. But I left it level and said, we should probably capture some of the gasoline in snow and ice. Because the years we have the fluctuation in the, in the fuel spending, other than spikes in fuel cost, but the volume is the heavy winters. So I thought maybe we should capture that over there. If you take it out of snow and ice, you can put it back in the regular budget. It's just a wash.
Yeah. The other suggestion I have is, I know Sean said that we shouldn't be talking about personnel here because this is showing an increase in personnel, but if he's actually going to be saving money in personnel, which is what I thought I heard him say, that's going to change the overall budget of this quite a bit. That's, I mean, if he's going to come back with a dramatically different salary line item, then that, that's a big change.
Do you think you're going to have a, a different and accurate salary line item by the public hearing?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I guess, going back to Steve, the chair's point, looking at the bottom line, right, you have a total...
My salaries are down now. They're not up, they're down.
The report we have in here shows a 20, 21,000.
Yeah, they're up by 21,000.
I don't know what report you got. What's the date?
It was just, it just went out today, actually. It says, detail DPW 2, January 30, version 2.
This is actually, it's missing a position proposing two new positions and has a position that the person is no longer there. So this, this does need some work on it.
Okay. So we are looking at an old version already.
Right. But regardless, if you're just looking at, at the expenses, we're at 85,000, right? Now, if we just look at the bottom line, right, compared to advisory's guidance, collectively, the town department's requests have come in 938,176 over our guidance.
600,000.
Well, that's, 600,000 is after you account for the pinata.
Right, the 300,000, correct.
So, so I guess we could assume that we're just going to eat up that entire 300,000, which we don't want to really make that assumption. But the requests are coming in just short of a million dollars over our guidance, right? And school, school, schools, right? Schools have only come in $44,000 over our guidance. They are not the culprit this year. Now, yes, fire, police and, and DPW, I think, account for a pretty significant chunk. I think that's part of the whole goal of being here today, is that fire, police and DPW are under your purview, right?
Yes.
So I, I guess I can understand that there are justifications for every dollar of that 85,000 that you're over. But then the question becomes, all right, if we were to say, can you bring that down by $30,000? And you, you know, I guess the question to you and to the select board and to David is, can you do that? Or are you going to say, no, we can't do that? And all of our decreases from department requests this year are going to have to come from police and fire, you know? Are we, are we going to make that determination that basically we're going to let our DPW director off the hook and say, yeah, you need all this stuff, and we're just going to squeeze harder on protection of life and property, which is coming in at over half a million dollars over our guidance?
I think what I said was that, the salary numbers are off here, so I think we're, we're saying, no, we're not saying everything's hunky-dory here. It's that we're not even looking at his actual budget, based on what I'm hearing from Sean and from David.
It's going to come down.
So I'd like to see, yeah, I think, once we see the, the final version, hopefully we will see a decrease, because I think, yeah, we're going to ask all the departments to cut back. I completely agree with you on that. We're not letting one person off the hook and depending on two other departments to cut back completely.
Yeah.
Well, to be fair, in terms of order of magnitude, I'm trying to remember, this is from memory, but the police department is what, 450, 400,000 of that total?
Yeah.
So I mean, that's, that's obviously a big chunk.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's obviously a pretty significant discussion that we need to have, you know, unfortunately, because...
Right, but I think it is, it does justify, absolutely, I agree with you, that we also have to see if there's anywhere, I know it's painful, but anywhere that Sean can find in his budget to cut, as you said, Jane, five here, 10 there. As you said, I think it was you, Steve, that said, if we said you had to find 10,000 in here, let's go through with a fine-tooth comb and figure where we can find that.
Yeah, I got more than 10.
Good.
From, and again, I don't know what sheet, what are you looking at for a total?
Let's start with a real budget. I would suggest that we stop discussing this budget because we're actually not making real progress. When we're dealing with numbers that aren't correct, that need to be adjusted, referred from both David and from Sean, these aren't the real numbers. So it may well be that there's a, there's a decrease, maybe there's an increase, we don't know.
It's a million 275, Sean, to answer your question.
I would agree.
One thing I'll point out is this feels a lot like a hearing, like this a month from now. This is the first time anyone's seen my budget.
Right, it's a budget workshop.
I normally would have had a couple of meetings with you guys banging these numbers around and it, I'll be the first to say, I don't like this process at all. I mean, this is art.
Sean, what's, what's your total compared to what we've got?
We have a total budget of a million 275, 231.
You're talking about DPW?
Yeah.
What?
Sean, if it makes you feel any better, we don't discriminate. Give everyone the business. We look at everyone.
No, it's fine, but it's, I mean, this was a lot of prep for the first go around.
I think better's the fairest, we give them a pass.
And historical.
And it's a new, a new approach.
Well, I think it's a matter of he's with all of us at once instead of, I mean, you used to come to us, then you'd go to the advisory, then you'd come to us again, then you'd, I mean, how many meetings are you going to? Whereas today, we're banging through a lot of stuff.
That's, that's one of the goals.
We are. And, but, you know, the flip side is, we can roll through several meetings and, and kind of ask some of this out. We're trying to...
I don't think anybody's expecting you to have your final budget today. It's a matter of giving you suggestions on places where you can find a cut.
Yeah. And to Paul's point, as I was trying to kind of summarize earlier, if we're not making any progress at the moment, if we're going to come back and hear different numbers soon enough, let's move on to capital.
Yeah, good idea.
Anyone against that?
You know, sorry, can I share an observation?
Please.
So I think, I agree that one benefit of this is that you get to talk to everybody about, you know, each of the department heads get to make their budgets and their expectations for 2021 visible to all of us. I do think that there's, there are two things that are happening concurrently, or two challenges that we have concurrently. Challenge number one is, you know, we need to be thoughtful about each dollar that we spend, right? And so a big part of this today is pressure testing all those requests. But one of the things that I heard several times was, you know, this budget is increasing to reflect the actual cost of doing our function, right? I think what we are uncovering is a lot of costs that have maybe been hidden from the budget process from voters up until now. And, you know, I think we as a, as a group, as advisory and select, I think we need to, to consider, do we want to continue, you know, allowing these costs to be obscured and, and dealing with them by hook or by crook outside of the normal appropriations process, or by shuffling things around or whatever? Or is this an opportunity for us to kind of grapple with this and say, hey, you know, it's actually costing us X amount more to manage our town buildings or to manage our open space? And this is maybe something that we need to ask the voters about, hey, is, you know, are you willing to pay this amount, this incremental additional amount in tax in order to have these services, or do you not? Right? Because I think, I think we can resolve the question of, is this money being spent prudently? I don't think that we, in, you know, as advisory and, and select, I don't think we're the right people to answer the question of, you know, do we actually want to pay the true cost of running the town?
Right, right. And I think kind of in a similar vein, are there cer, you know, the question for the voters, are there town services that could be eliminated, that you don't need anymore? And yeah, I don't think that's something for us to discuss here, but I agree with your overall take.
And, yeah, I don't think that's something for us to discuss here, but I agree with your overall take.
But I, I do think we need to be, I mean, I'm not sure that anything has been obscured from the voters. I, I think that the town has been running and services have been what they've been, and they've cost whatever they've cost. And, yes, costs tend to go up every year, but, but we do, through careful management, try to keep the tax rate at a reasonable, at a reasonable rate. And so, we're just, I think we're engaging in that same process this year that we engage in every year. We see that we've got asks that are too high for what we think is a reasonable tax rate, and we're trying to bring those back. So I, I'm not sure that, I think this is a fairly normal process. I mean, we've, we've, we've changed the actual process to try to condense more into one day, and we could debate about whether, you know, that's, that's a good idea or not. But I, I, I think the process is basically what it always has been, and I think the management of the budgets is basically what it always has been. I don't think anybody's saying, well, we have to cut out all kinds of services because we just can't afford them. I mean, I don't think anything that drastic is what we're asking for. We're just asking for some, as somebody said, you know, squeezing a little everywhere to try to keep things within a reasonable budget that's manageable from a tax rate point of view. So, I, I don't think we should get too concerned that we have to greatly change anything. I think we just need to be a little more disciplined here and there and everywhere, and, and that's worked in the past, and I can see that working again now, this year.
You might also consider that if you don't fully fund, we'll survive. I, I had a, a town that didn't have enough money, so they decided not to fund the police department for the upcoming year. And, now, a couple of years later, looking back on it, the state police stepped in and took care of the town during that period of time. Nothing bad happened. The town didn't, uh, fall apart, didn't, uh, there weren't any riots, there weren't any big problems. So we don't have to be perfect at, at putting this together, to me, to save $10,000 here, $10,000 there. I don't think it's a big question to the voters of, do you want to have your, your buildings fall down? I think you're right, do little, small, little incremental stuff. Because towns have tried the big things, and even the big things don't, don't really have a big impact when you look at a period of years. Paul, how do we apply for that state police coverage?
Um, let's, as Stephen said, let's move on to capital.
Yes.
I think everybody's been here for quite some time and.
Long time.
I've only been here physically, middle.
I, um, I should note that also with us are the two members of the Capitol Budget Committee, Joe Shanahan and Keisha Listner here. Can I ask, should they be called to a formal meeting because they are here in the room together? For this? You guys want to formally open a meeting for yourselves?
Did you post?
Yes.
Called order? There you go. Done. Have them phone?
Go for it.
This will be somewhat brief. At least I'm not going to give you much detail. A, a couple of these are presentations in themselves, so I didn't, I didn't, we can discuss them. Separately, I think I'll send out the basis of the road management. I, I have it electronically in here, but it's, uh, it could take a while to go through. I'd rather come back to it, hit on it, discuss it. And same thing with the facilities capital, we just, just talked, keep the screen. This is just a snapshot of the front page, I think everybody's had, maybe you guys are looking at the spreadsheet that is the capital for all the buildings, it rolls up into one. So, yeah, I didn't want to give you the list of each individual project that, that shows by building, and by year, and of course, things shift around.
Have you met with Keisha and Joe on this?
I did, actually.
Okay.
I gotta thank Keisha, because it was a really busy time for me. So she went back through the sheet, that, that again, the basis of each one of these sheets is based off of the onsite insight, um, analysis. So, we're slowly working through it, and of course, as we've discussed, we're also, we're still pushing. Things haven't been done on it yet. So, that just kind of pins it at 230, and that's a, you know, that's a number kind of for discussion. Not all these projects have to get done. We don't, um, I'll say this a couple of times, not, the construction year doesn't always line up that well with fiscal year. So projects you talk about, you know, we're, we're, as we're setting these budgets up, we're 18 months from the, from the end of the next fiscal year that we're talking about. So, not everything lines up, like, last year's, a couple of last year's biggest projects aren't done yet. But we have to, to keep the pipeline projects at least lined up, and, and then look back and see how we're doing with the, with the capital. And also knowing that some of this, some of this is funding shortfalls in the operating budget. Unless we allow the operating budget to take a pretty heavy negative.
So Sean, I know you're not going to go into detail, can you give me some color as to what year 2021 is?
The biggest project on Town Hall is the roof on Town Hall. It's, it's in pretty bad shape. I was actually a little bit nervous, because they're working on the roof to finish the exhaust for the, uh, for the generator. The shingles are starting to break. I fear there probably is some leaking up in the attic.
Okay. And the big one on the fire station?
Did we put the roof on the fire station right now? It, it is.
Roof for the fire station?
Yeah. Same thing, and that had leaks previous, that, that suffers from ice jams. That's beyond it, like, again, both of these were done, the fire station was right before, I think it was finished in 99.
Okay.
This was finished in 2000.
And DPW and police, just briefly?
Yeah, I purposely don't have the list.
Okay, okay. I've got it. Actually, Keisha, if we can just short, briefly, give us what it, what the ask is for.
Keisha, could you just come up to the microphone so they can, if you don't want? Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, which building were you asking about? I can tell you what the expenses are.
The DPW and the police station.
DPW is mostly crack fill and seal coat for about 13,5, and then a fueling station for 54, 64. Building security for 5,000, and building mounted lighting for 1,000. And the police station is, um, about 11,4 of site lighting, some interior vestibule doors, garage door opener, and exterior repairs, which include the brick and the trim sopet fascia, and some work on the windows.
Okay. Thank you, any questions up here about those? Thank you.
You guys all have the spreadsheet.
I'm sure somewhere. Yeah. The, I, I sent, uh, the collated version that Joe Shanahan came up with this morning, I sent that around to everybody in advisory, so if you haven't checked your email this morning, if you, I don't know if you're connected to the wifi here, but you, everyone should have it.
Well, you'll see, it didn't show up on this. Each, each building has its own tab.
Can you send it to us? I don't think we've gotten it. I don't think we've seen it. Well, please send it to us.
Yeah, I can email it to you.
That'd be great, and then I can send it on to the rest of my board.
So we talked about deferred maintenance quite a bit. We did, this year, we did an assessment of the roads. I'm going to send around the, uh, that assessment, I have it here, if I pull it up. What they did basically is they, they rode the whole town, they mapped out everything that's there, they did it with a, an interactive. In order to capture what state every road is in. I do actually want to pull the map.
How can I get the screen on, dude?
This, I want to see it here.
You can have to take it off.
No. All right, I'll keep talking, maybe I won't. I won't, all right. Next time I come back to you, I'll present the whole plan, it shows the map.
No maps after 2 o'clock on a Saturday.
What's that?
No maps after 2 o'clock on a Saturday.
Perfect. All right, so the plan's going to address the cost to maintain it, uh, the current level of roadways, and it does an analysis between current spending, spending to maintain. Our current spending will not maintain our roads at this, at this level. They're gonna, it's, they're going to continue to deteriorate. So we have, you know, one extreme is we, we continue with the current, then to keep it at the same level, and then what it's going to cost to improve the level. Each obviously comes at a different cost annually, uh, both in the, in the work versus the maintenance of trying to, um, hold the roads at a worsened condition. It, it's not real rocket science to think that if you keep, if you're maintaining them at a better condition, it's not as costly to fix. One would, I don't know how many people drive down Pleasant Street, but obviously, we can't chip seal that like we did Elliott Street. At the same token, we can't ever let Elliott Street get like Pleasant, because 16,000 cars a day will be blowing their tires before they get to work. We historically get about $260,000 in Chapter 90 funding, that's not going to change.
How much?
260, 260. So this takes that into account, but 260, again, is all we've been spending.
Got you. Okay.
With the exception of a couple of years ago, we threw 450 in addition to that.
Okay.
Prior to that, we had gone the better part of 10 years without.
And so, sorry, Sean, the, so the ask for 2021, capital ask for roads is 450, correct?
Right. And, so, what I want to point out again is, first year, construction season doesn't really line up with fiscal season, so the first year's going to roll through 18 months of work, basically. The key is to get the pipeline filled with construction projects. We can't wait till July 1 to schedule projects, otherwise, we missed our entire season. So even, so that, take for instance, this year, we have 260 guaranteed from the state, which is available to at least line up. They'll approve us to do the work, we'll have to probably borrow in anticipation if that work gets done. But we want to line work up in the spring. That 450, I can't line up until I'm guaranteed to have that money. So we may spend some of that this coming fall, but in all likelihood, the majority of it is spring of '21 work.
Sometimes there are provisions, actually, that you can actually spend the money before the fiscal year. If it's after the town meeting has voted for it, and you've gone past the time that town meeting can be reopened. Does anyone here know if we can do that here, like capital expenditure?
Are you?
I have a comment here that you can spend after town meeting, or if I didn't tell you the due time.
For cap, only for capital? Because you can do the short-term loans, whatever else. Tell me honestly, I mean, I struggle with all the time, that fiscal years are really meant for school years, they're not meant for construction seasons. And that's why you often have to bank capital, and that's why small communities bank their Chapter 90 year after year to do it.
I have some magic language that you had for the motions at town meeting, that allow the money to be spent immediately in, in the current fiscal year.
I recommend that for low work, certainly.
But how could it, if, if it's borrowed money, if it's, if it's prop, if it's exempt money, how can you do that? The election hasn't happened.
Because you have the authorization, so you're doing nothing but a short-term.
You gotta at least wait for the election, though.
So you're not going to, if you do any actual debt service until after fiscal year?
Yeah, because I can do it up, up.
Yeah, that money, that money wouldn't be spent that quick, anyway. The key, the key is having it for the following spring. Like, right now, I have nothing for the spring, other than the Chapter 90. And, and that's essentially what we're doing, by not funding, by not having any funding outside of the Chapter 90, projects that are 400,000 take two years worth of Chapter 90. So there was a couple of years my predecessor did nothing, and, you know, needed a year and a half's worth of money to, to do Route 16 was one of them.
And roads are a classic example of just the, um, exponential amount you decrease by neglect. I know we talk about a lot of different things, but to make, I can compare it to his actual roof. The roof leaks a little bit, and you have problems, roof leaks a lot, you ruin your building. And if, after you pave a road, you need to start touching within five years of a brand-new road surface. And I think just the neglect of doing that, you get a sudden, really, an exponential decrease, and I think reports like that pretty good, what I've seen there. Yeah, I mean, that's basically, and I think honestly, what I've seen over the last year, we made good use, chunked, made good use of those funds. And, uh, particularly with the chip seal and the left-hand course, they did on Hunting Lane, um, College of Crestor that. I was so disappointed in the increase. The other thing I wanted to add is that Chapter 90's been sitting at 200 million statewide forever. I think they've released an extra 50 million once, 100 million another time. Baker was going to release 300 million, but then he saw how bad MBTA wasn't in shape, so all the money's been going into that. But it hasn't accounted for any inflict, any increased inflation for, um, liquid petroleum, which has gone up, again, higher faster than inflation rates. So every community I know is supplementing right now with capital funds.
If I can add to that, that we do have a deal with the governor that at the end of every year, a surplus, they do a surplus, they do a final budget in which they take the, the state's actually making money, and they divide it to surplus. Some part of that money is going to Chapter 90. So this year, he had, for, for the close of 2019, he had closed an additional 60 million, which is 30, would be a 30% increase over what we get. And the final turned out to be, uh, 20 million, which is a 10% increase, which is 26,000. We voted, the year before was 40 million. So at the end of every fiscal year, we are adding to the 200 million a, a sum based on the amount of money that the state has. So, the, the number that Sean quoted is, is the foundation number, the rest is uncertain, but the last few years, we have been able to add extra money to the Chapter 90 piece.
One other, uh, thing, and I'll, I'll probably rarely offer this, but when we were talking about the, the item, the materials item in the budget, the 85,000, that's a number I really hesitate to lower without having this capital item. Because without this, that's the only place I buy road materials. With continual money applied at the capital level, it, there wouldn't be that much of a burden. And I, I would be in favor of knocking that back down, um, knowing that there was going to be this, because not every dime of this is, a, a lot of that could have been spent out of the capital money. We've talked a couple of times about stormwater. This is, we're going into the second full year of, um, compliance work now on the MS-4 permit. Up to date, almost all of that work has been done by a consulting firm, as far as the, the permitting compliance, the writing of procedures. Myself and Jeannie have done a fair amount of work as well, but we, we haven't really been doing any physical work. It's, this is the year we have to start accounting for inspections, um, of outfalls, inspections of all of the catch basins, all of the structures, and, um, starting to generate reports on what, what's going to be needed. There's also work out there that's undefined right now. Eric could probably speak to it more, but it's, it, even our consultants aren't quite sure what the impact's going to be on the phosphorus reduction to the Charles River watershed. That's, that's coming, it's probably not this calendar year, uh, because everything gets tied up in lawsuits, but it, it is coming. We don't know what that's going to cost. I don't intend that this request is going to be spent in a year. But we also don't know the exact cost of, of, we know we have to fund more consulting and some of the work.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So, several years ago, with the recommendation of Board of Select and the approval of the legislature, the town appropriated 400,000 to fund the MS-4.
Yep. Yep. We've used it.
You used all of that money yet?
We're, we're close to it, we, we will this year.
It's a five-year permit, I think the only thousand, close recovery is the first year or two, or year, we're ending up year two right now.
Can, can I have an accounting on the four hundred thousand?
Not right here, but yes, I don't think it was four hundred thousand, though.
I'm pretty sure it was four hundred thousand, and the first couple of years was just very little to be spent because the, the permit was held up by the EPA and issued it, and so on and so on, so we didn't spend anything for years. So I think there's been maybe more money than you think sitting in an account, in a warrant article, that maybe could be applied to this. Just want to verify what the, what the opening balance was and what the current price is. If it's zero, it's zero, but I don't recall spending that kind of money. At least I'd like to know what it was charged to.
I'll get you all of it. But it's gonna, it's gonna dry up this year, we'll sunset that this year.
And just maybe this day? Can you get all that in one? How many years ago was that, four years?
It was, it's more than you think. I think it was 2012. I think it was twelve.
Sean, can I ask you to continue on?
What's that?
To continue on with the next request?
Yeah. Any other questions on the stormwater? No?
I'm thinking of a court, I guess, the MS4 permit, he came back sued in multiple entities, including the Charles River watershed. So the phosphorus removal for those in the Charles River watershed, it will possibly increase this year. In fact, the comment period is over, and then, I think it's the over or ending, so it is going to increase this year higher than what we expected under the.
I want to point out also that this is not, I call it MS4, stormwater compliance. There's just structural, physical work that we haven't done in areas that are prone to flooding. They affect people's yards, they affect a couple of farms. So we're, we're starting to get to the point where we have to fix them. It is costly to fix stormwater issues. You have outfalls that may or may not have ever been accounted for on easements. You start with legal work and engineers, it takes a while to get to the point where you can do the work, but we need to start doing some of that. A lot of these developments were put in the fifty, sixty, seventies, and not everything was documented well. A number of years ago, Pine Hill Lane went through a couple of town meeting votes. I'm just going to put this out there, that we're working on a couple of different things. The road was passed through town meeting to allow it to be built, allow the land swap at Town Forest to be done. There had to be, because Town Forest is restricted use, there had to be a land swap and a vote of the state legislature. That all happened, but the land swap never happened. The next town meeting approved money enough to build, basically the temporary emergency access on where the road was supposed to be built. That's all that's been done. At this point, we put in a placeholder for town meeting in the event that we move forward with that. We're working on, there were several different state funding sources at the time. One Paul already hit on, there was, there was an earmark for a million.
That was a while ago now.
Right, that was a while ago. After that, there was a couple others, so I believe David Replinsky are looking at what's still available, if not, possibly refreshing one of those. So we don't, we don't know what the funding source is, we don't know what the exact cost is. We do have Green International working on some of the work that needs to be done, because the, the land transfer should have happened. And it's a huge parcel, so it has to be subdivided. That legal work should have been done, and it's, and it's going to get done.
Can I ask, the proposal for taking it from the temporary emergency-only lane that is now, to creating a full-time lane, are we talking one lane, two lanes, sidewalks, granite curbs, what are we talking about?
Uh, well, the, the plan that they had before, and the plan that is soon to be reconfirmed, is changing Pine Hill Lane, which comes in off of Elliott Street at the lights, to one-way. It goes by the front of the school, there's a drop-off there, and then that bus loop goes away. The parking lot gets reconfigured to actually allow parking in the parking lot, more than the twelve cars that fit up there. And then the road exits down on Elliott Street, where the, where the emergency access road is now.
Do you need lights there on Elliott Street?
No. The design does not include lights at Elliott.
Parking on the side of the lane hidden down Elliott Street?
Parking on the way out.
Yeah.
An increase in the parking on the way in, because it's parallel now on a winding road, which doesn't really fit, it'll be angle in. So I think there's sixty percent more parking space is going up, there's quite a few more at the school. The basis of this is a huge improvement to the safety. Just in the past calendar year, I think we've had two times where, where the road was closed abruptly.
At least three.
Three? Tree went down, wires went down. And when that happens, it's always at the worst possible time. People are trying to pick up, people get stranded on the road, there was people stuck on the road with the wires, a tree in the wires. The gates weren't open yet, there was, you know, at that time, there's four hundred people at the school, or, or headed that way. There's some serious safety concerns with that school without the use of that road, and, and cars turning around in front of buses. So it, the, the purpose is to address all that. If we do nothing with the lot, with, with the road, the school's going to have to do something with the parking lot. It's, it's in a condition now where it's a safety issue, the pavement, there's serious problems with the pavement, so.
I was just going to say, a question came up about that, because, you know, part of the emphasis for capital budget this year is to look at long-term planning. And we did receive from the schools a request for roadway and parking lot paving a couple of years out. So I'm just wondering if there's overlap with that in what you're suggesting.
Well, it would, it would negate that.
Yeah.
Or take care of that.
How many years out was that, Joe, was that twenty twenty-two?
Yeah, they put two hundred and eighty thousand in the year twenty twenty-three. So it's in that summary sheet that I sent out.
Yeah.
So there's a little bit of overlap that Keisha actually identified earlier. So just wanted to address that, it might help offset longer-term costs.
And so this request, sorry, one second, Paul, this request will come from DPW and Upland Schools?
It, both.
Okay. Go ahead, Paul.
Group sidewalk?
But that's the point I was going to make, is that when we did the design, when we were working with the legislature to get this thing passed, and I was heavily involved getting this thing passed, we had to make a sidewalk, we had to have lights. And the neighbors were very upset at what we were proposing to do, because it was pretty big footprint, and the lights would be intruding on private property and all the rest. The design needs to be looked at again, I mean, the reason why the state wanted the sidewalks was a question of access and safety for kids, they didn't want kids walking in a road that was going to be active. The reason for the lights is they didn't want anybody in the dark. So there was a, a conflict, if you will, between the neighborhood, forces from the state that were pushing for more rather than less. And I think we don't need to go with the big, big road. We may be able to figure out a compromise with the neighbors and with the state that would allow us to have something there that would work better for everybody concerned. So while there is a plan, and the plan is pretty elaborate, maybe we could do a license office.
Thank you.
And, and that is being looked at, we, we went through that, I mean, that plan's pretty old, that engineering firm doesn't even exist anymore. That's why Green International is looking at it, and there's been great strides on low-impact lighting. Without, I'm not even sure anyone was using LED lighting at the time, when that was originally designed. And, and we are looking at the road width, the sidewalks is an absolute necessity. But it's, it may just be one side, because parking's only going to be on one side, so it's not going to be a double sidewalk, it's not going to. Exactly.
Not a sidewalk you'd see in the city, it's just a path.
So definitely there's a, there's a fresh set of eyes looking at the impact to the neighbors.
And so by town meeting, we will have what a hard cost is and what the state might be able to kick in towards it?
That's.
That's the goal?
That's definitely the goal.
That's the goal, okay.
Right. Yes, except for where the road exits on Route 16, as far as the neighbors are concerned, it's approximately eight hundred feet to the houses that are on 16. Now, you said eight hundred feet, but it's up over a rise and down, so it seems inconceivable of those lights to bother the people, they would.
That's the same thing.
Right where it exits.
Correct.
It's eight hundred feet, I mean, how many of us are eight hundred feet from the road?
Are you talking about, are you talking about where it enters Route 16?
Yes.
The auxiliary road? It actually does a directly across the driveway.
That's right.
Yeah, he said except for that.
Those people will be impacted, but as far as the other neighbors pulling it down on the same side of the road is, is, is we're talking about, they're eight hundred feet away, if you take a look at the, the aerial maps.
Well, I'm just reporting the facts, that in order to get this emergency road passed, we had to make compromises with the neighbors. And that's how we ended up with an emergency road, and that's how it passed town meeting, first time it didn't pass town meeting. So there are neighbors out there, whether they're justified in their complaints, or they're not justified in their complaints, they're members of the community, urging us to work on a consensus plan, rather than trying to jam anything down on anybody's.
I don't think that's the plan, but I know that every final parent knows how dangerous it is up there.
And every public safety official.
Exactly.
So.
So.
All right, wheeled excavator.
We're going to work on consensus. Capital budget hasn't seen this, so we're going to fly right through this. This past year, we had, we were just plagued with machine breakdowns, and, and one of the major things we do that people don't really see us doing through the summer and fall is roadside mowing. As you can imagine, that's not all that easy to do in town. We rented or leased a piece of equipment this year. Part of the reasoning was to see if we can use something that's a little more versatile, I'm shifting gears a little bit, than, than the backhoe. Highway departments have always had a backhoe, it's, it's not great at doing a whole lot of things. So we, we tried out a wheeled excavator, which can function and do everything a backhoe can do, and can also function and do many other things. By the time we got it, we were so far behind on the roadside mowing, we, we started using that exclusively for the over-the-rail mowing, which you may imagine is pretty extensive in town. All the wooded areas of town, if we don't maintain that, they just grow right out over the street and hit you, mirrors. We're looking to replace the backhoe with this piece of machinery. And it'll also, it does more than that, it also does, there's a machine we call the whacker, which is a little, it's like a little miniature loader that does the snowblowing. It used to do the over-the-rail mowing, and it's beyond its life, it can't do it anymore. We spent a lot of money just keeping it in one piece, so it could work for the winter, but it can't do any more roadside mowing.
What's the price on these last six items? Last five items?
Actually, I have it printed out, that's a hundred and seventy-five thousand. There was a stack of sheets. Alright.
I'll go there.
So the roadside mower attachments at fifteen thousand. And again, these are attachments to go with the, we bought a large tractor last year, John Deere tractor. So now we can start having some implements that are significantly bigger than what we had with the other one. The drag blade grater is fifteen thousand. Shelby cabinets maintenance shop's thirty. Then a drum roller at seventeen and a half, seventeen-five. And vibratory plate compactor at ten thousand, nine hundred. Those again, capital budget, I haven't made my presentation to capital budget.
So I, just a note on this, Sean, because we, one tool that we use as a reference is this UMass fleet assessment tool, right? And the good thing is, is we have been stepping up and making some investments, so when you look at it, it's, it's color-coded, so I'll just kind of show it. A lot of the red items, we've actually checked off and replaced within the last year or two. We're now kind of into the orange-yellow items, which is where this, this resides, but it's still a pretty old piece of equipment, the backhoe is 2004, right?
Right.
It's a little bit apples and oranges, though, because you're, a lot of what Sean's recommending is sort of more efficiency-driven work with his equipment, based on new technologies, add-on to the fleet. So it's not, everything that is in here is not apples-to-apples with what Sean's suggesting. So he's not suggesting replace the backhoe with the backhoe. So I think it's just the due diligence we have to do is, is the efficiency worth the incremental cost? Because the difference between the recommended replacement price in here and what Sean has is about forty K. And I think it was around a hundred and thirty-five K to replace the backhoe, where you have a hundred and seventy-five K for the wheel. So that's just what we have to kind of weigh in the decision-making, I guess.
To that point, I will add on, because I did do some digging. DPW has had about 1.1 million bucks' worth of equipment in the last four years, capital equipment. So that's a pretty healthy chunk of capital equipment, I don't doubt that you needed all of it. But that's a lot of money in the last four years of town meetings to come up with for, for capital equipment. So that caught my attention when I was looking at that.
I'd like to add something too. Are you planning to give us your projections? Because right now, we don't have any idea of what your future requests are going to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you can use this, I mean, so like the dump trucks, do we, we haven't replaced any of the dump trucks, are they on the radar?
We're pushing those out, and that's why they were so high. You know, those large dump trucks are over two hundred thousand dollars. So we were kind of on a clip replacing those, and I'm pushing that out, because we weren't looking at the small stuff.
So it would be good to get those.
Not that the wheel excavator's small, but a lot of the smaller implements, we, we just, we hadn't bought them in years, we hadn't been doing anything with them.
It's just like those big-ticket items, it'd be good to get those on the radar, on the five-year plan, to kind of see it coming and.
Then the trees, we're back to the trees.
Yeah. This didn't make the warrant, and it, and it came up, and, and part of that was, it slipped on me because I, we, you'll remember, although we did an article last year, we did a, kind of a different kind of article. So it, it, we shouldn't forget about that, we need to do something. I don't know how we want to fund it. It's certainly not in my budget to keep up with the amount of trees that, that got to come down, or are going to come down. Eversource, it's been a big uptick the past few weeks for us. What we did is we kind of put a pause, waiting for Eversource to come back with what they were going to do, because I really don't want to take trees down that they're going to pay for. About a month ago, they finally came back, maybe just over a month, and handed us the map of what they were going to do, and it's pretty substantial. It's a huge circuit that kind of goes right through town. It gets some of South Main, North Main, Elliott Street, and, and a couple of big neighborhoods. But it allowed us to jump off and do what's been standing dead for a couple of years, up and around Farm Pond and some other areas, you know, I mean, we're basically doing triage right now, we're not even close to keeping up with it. The best we can tell, we won't know till they leaf out. If I was sitting here eleven months ago, I would have told you five hundred trees are marked and confirmed dead. It's hard during the season, but if you know what you're looking at, you can look at them after they leaf out. We're guessing another three hundred died after they leafed out. We're, we're not into, we, we took a big hit on the, on the big ones. Like the Greenwood Street trees, those, those were what, five feet in diameter? They were huge, unfortunately, we killed, we killed off a lot of the old growth stuff. Unfortunately, we killed, we, we killed off a lot of the old growth stuff. There's still more coming. And we are doing maybe a fifth of whatever Source is doing in town. EverSource probably spent between 450 and 500,000 dollars last year in town. We didn't. So we, we have to throw some more funding, and I don't know how we want to do that, but.
Do you have a results?
They just chip them?
Uh, they chip probably the top third of the canopy. It's shattering on the way down to the ground.
Yeah.
And then the butt larks are so massive, they got to move them around with a crane and into a log truck and.
Do they sell them?
Oh, gosh, no. Nobody wants that.
Nobody wants a five-foot diameter tree?
No. Um, if you want them, we can bring them to your house. Once they come off the log truck, they're not going back on.
I'm sure my husband would love that. He would love that.
It's, uh, there's a huge glut in the market, so there's some yards around here with, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of removal.
Yep.
Um, we have moved some up to, uh, a parcel of Town Forest where the, uh, the cordwood guys are working off of Lake Street, which happens to also be where there's hundreds of dead oak trees laying next to the, uh, road. So like an example, we went to, uh, one of the tree companies was in, we closed that piece of Lake Street beyond the pond for most of the day. They were dropping trees as fast as they could get them, and they just dragged them up into the woods, um, which is fine. There are trees and it's our land. It'll be five years before anyone gets all that cut and split.
Can I ask, Sean, how's the spending of what was allocated for this fiscal year? Now, last year we had, we, I forget the total number that was sent your way for trees.
250, right? 150 and then 100,000?
Yeah, I think it was a total of 250.
Oh, yeah. That was moved from stabilization.
Moved from stabilization.
Well, 150 from stabilization.
Yep, and then there was another 100 somewhere. Are you, do you know, are you, are we kind of halfway through spending that, or? I, I know you certainly can spend it because you have so many trees you could do, right?
We're more than half. I mean, that's just, we, we made a big hit at it the past three or four weeks. That'll push us probably to two-thirds done. And, uh, I mean, now's when you want to do it, especially when there's not a snow cover, but it's winter work. The tree crews are pretty eager to get on pavement instead of playing around in the mud in people's yards, so we're going to want to work down, but we.
Okay.
We've got to save some for the spring to see what, what shakes out, but we'll, we'll need something next fiscal year.
So do you have a number on this, what the ask is going to be for this year 2011?
Um, no.
You need something again, no doubt.
I mean, we, yeah, we got to throw another hit at it. Anything less than 100 doesn't do much.
Okay.
All right. Make your bid.
Um, real quick before, are there any other questions from up here specifically regarding any of the items that Sean had put up there that we know are coming for capital? Okay. Sean, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm done. We'll see you again, bud. Joe, Keisha, thank you.
So we're up to the 12th of the police department, is that?
Yeah, so, uh, on the meeting, so advisory has a meeting on February, Wednesday, February 12. We'll invite Rick, Chief Thompson, and Lieutenant Oback. As long as you guys have a form that can join us there, we should be able to do the same thing we're planning to do here today.
We're going to move to 12:00?
Yeah, we're going to go to that, because they couldn't come on the 13th.
And then I'll be on the 14th.
Right. Yeah, 7:00?
7:15 we start. And we do have some other budgets to go through first, so, but they are somewhat gentle.
So the time, you think you'll be, um, at least 7:30?
I was going to say, no, I was going to say 8:30, uh, 8, 8:15?
Okay.
We're meeting every other night these days, so.
I figured, it's not just swing on by, like on your way home.
What about fire? Because I know he couldn't be here today either.
I put him on for the 13th.
On our meeting? Okay, so he'll probably just have to come on now.
He'll come, um, yes, he'll come for, or he can come to one later on for us. We have a bunch of kind of open slots that are pending for article discussions and/or snow days or anything like that, so we'll get to that. So up front here, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And all in favor? That's at 2:34 this afternoon.
I'll take a motion to adjourn as well.
So moved, second?
All in favor? Thank you.
[inaudible].